No public comments.
Okay, welcome everybody. No public comment. Move to the consent agenda. Consist of the minutes from last meeting appropriations. No late transfers this time.
Make a motion that the acceptance minutes is presented.
Second.
Sharon, second. A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. That was in the packet. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Carrying four zero. We'll go to old business, BG Consultants, the bid on sewer.
Yeah, I'll look through it. He was gonna show us, he sent some information that's in the packet to explain why. But there's only, keep it out. We contacted five companies about bidding, we only got two bids back. And as you can see, Mayor Specialty, which is the company that we had rehab or manholes already and re-lined some of our sewer lines. They actually had a little bid. And then Ace Pipe Cleaning. Low is what they bid on, on making the near foot of, pipe would be inspected and then heavy cleaning, mast tree removal, root removal, and so on. So their recommendation from BG Consultants is to use Mayor. They've used them in the past and had really, we had good luck with them, they've had good luck with them. The funds to pay for that come from the Heroes money. And then we're pretty much tapped out on that money. There will only be about, I don't know, $2,000 of that money left, so.
After this.
After this, yeah. That Heroes money will include the $265,000 for the water tower repair and repaints, the water preliminator engine report, which is 16.5, the sewer, part of the sewer P E R, which is 5,500. And then you'll notice there's a change, updated contract in your packet for BG Consultants for $8,300 for the sewer P E R and C C T V stuff. Originally, that quote was 16.5, I think it's 13.8 now, so it actually went down a little bit. And then you have the 24.2550 from, from Mayor Specialties. We had $321,000 of Heroes money, this is a brand to, we spent 319,500, so.
Good use for it.
Well, that's what it's supposed to be used for.
I know, but still it's good to get it used and, and be able to use it too. I mean, because that's a lot, so. It's great.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
When do we, do we go ahead and?
So what will happen is you guys will approve it, I'll sign the contract that's in the packets for the $8,300, and then they will schedule all that with Mayor, so.
Okay. Make a motion that we approve the $8,300 to get the work started.
We approve the 24.250.
Okay, and the 24.250?
Yep, because we have to pay that.
Okay.
And then the $8,300 for BG Consultants.
Oh, okay, I see. Did you get that?
Got a motion to pay the BG Consultants fee and also approve the Mayor bid of 24.250.
Yep.
I'll second that motion.
Second, back to Sean. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Carrying four. No opposed? Motion passed. Next thing, item on the agenda, update on the safe routes to school.
So if you guys remember, Sean has to remember if you were here or not, but we got a Clement Engineering Grant for Safe Routes to School and $75,000. The total cost of doing all the engineering for that project is $92,028.58, so we'll have a responsibility of the $17,028.58, which is, can be taken out of the special highway fund. So that's not really an issue. But the other part, the bigger issue, bigger question is, is that we, since we're implementing our engineering during that report, we can all go ahead and apply for funding for the project, which is, those sheets I gave you. And that will be the total cost of, if we did all of Phase One. Phase One is everything that's in red. And it also takes, when I come and survey and stuff, everything that's in green that's existing, any of that that needs to be updated will be a part of that, so.
Updated or repaired?
Yep.
Yeah.
And all the crosswalks and stuff would have to be made ADA compliant, which is part of this, and so on and so forth. But the cities match on that. The total cost of that, is $946,250. It's an 820 grant. So the TA funds would pay 757,000 of it. Our responsibility would be 189.250 of roughly a million dollar project, which I think's pretty amazing. But we have options, so I talked to Brady today, because I know we have, we submitted that base grant on Monday, and I'll talk about that here in a minute, which has a mashing portion. And then we got the 56 project, and I'm gonna talk about that, have matching portions of that as well. But we can push this project out, I think, till, comply for the funding and then request to do the project in 2024. So that way, we don't obligate ourselves to a bunch of matching funds at one time. So.
So, even if this is in '24?
Yes, yeah. And Brady said he's pretty sure we can do that. He's gonna double check, but I talked to him this afternoon about it, because I had concerns about that. With the highway closing down and stuff like that, I worried a little bit about it. But he said he's pretty sure that you can pick either '23 or '24 to do the project.
Right.
So. But I guess my question is, he has to submit something by March 4th to apply for the funding. And I just wanted to make sure you guys were okay with me giving him, we would have to do that.
Apply for the funding?
To do the TA funds to do the project here. Yeah, so we haven't applied for-
But even though we apply for it and get it, we can still push it out?
That's what he's saying, yes. That's what Brady was telling me today, so. So we can push it out to '24 if we need to.
Okay.
So any, any other questions?
I have one question, and it's the funding portion of it, I think it's great. I think the whole project's a good deal. The rapid flashing sign on Main Street, is that the big rectangle with the two up and down?
Yeah, it says, uh, what was that here? A rectangle rapid flashing beacon system.
Yeah, I just, I hate the idea of having that flashing down there, but I guess if that's part of the-
It's part of, well, part of the Safe Routes to Schools, they require that for the funding, so.
Okay.
You know, I know there's been issues down there with people about getting hit and stuff like that all the time, and we just have those stop signs or slow, you know, those signs that get ran over by semis and snow trucks, so.
So, is it only flashing though during school times?
When anybody walks up to the crosswalk to cross, they can push a button, obviously, to use it, just like what you would have in a city or something like that. Because the goal was to make it safer for kids to cross the street and to the school, so.
I understand that.
But no, I don't disagree with you, but.
Yeah, I just wish there was maybe an alternative option or something to.
How far back from the intersection?
That I don't know. I wouldn't know that unless, they'll have to come out here and survey and do all that, that's part of the engineering and getting to this point. That's what the $96,000 is for, is for them to come survey and figure all that out. So they don't currently have that information, but.
So it'd be one down by the elementary school and one up?
Yep.
I think those are already down there, correct, or?
They have a person out there with elementary school, has a person out there with the-
Okay, so it's just the 21 hour that's flashes, is all?
Yep. They don't have anybody at the crosswalk down there. They have people there, but they don't have the sign, they don't have the button or anything that lights up.
So that's, is it one of, like, the one that's down there now by the school that alternates flash?
I would guess. They also have the ones that have the triangle sign where the lights flash and-
All the way around and the other ones?
Yeah, I don't know. Imagine for $31,000 is probably a pretty good one, so, at least I would hope so for that price for some of the flashers.
Well, that's probably including all the wiring and everything else to get it done, so.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions for Nick? So I hear a tenant, a motion to approve seeking the funding for the Safe Routes to School.
A motion that we, you know, go after the funding to get that started on the TA funds and for the 2024 date that Nick, 2024, is that right?
That's, that's what I talked to Brady about today, and he said that he's pretty sure that's possible. If something changes with that, I'll let you guys know. But I think there's a way we can figure out how to pay for it if we had to do it in '23. I don't know that you want to leave, you know, $800,000 on the table.
No, I don't, no, not at all.
So. But I did ask that question, Brady was pretty sure you could do that, and Brady's normally rides, so more often than not.
Second.
Sharon, second on that motion. Got a motion and a second to proceed with approving funds for the Safe Routes to School and to push the project out 2024, '23, whatever.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. No opposed? Motion carries four zero. Okay, Nick, looks like you're up again, updating on the base grant.
So that, Christie and I, I helped Christie as much as, I helped her answer questions and stuff like that. We got all the information gathered and to her Monday morning, she submitted it, and we got the confirmation it had been submitted. We will know the outcome of that on March 25th, when awards are announced. Christie feels really good about it. Most small communities our size don't normally have shovel-ready projects where the engineering and designs have been done. So a lot of communities our size are not able to apply for these short turnaround grants. And the good thing about us is if you look at our budget compared to what this project's gonna do, it's more impactful for us than it is somewhere like Johnson County, Lenexa, for the projects that are gonna do. So Christie feels really good about it, you know, she knows a lot of people upstate and things like that, so cross our fingers and hope it works out. I got the, Matt, I talked to the Farms and Drovers Bank and the Young Foundation, and they're willing to work with us to take care of the matching portions of that stuff, so, or help us take care of them.
So would you review again all of the things that she included in this?
So, yes, so it's a master plan for housing, industrial, and commercial properties, where they should be located within the city, within the city. The completion of the Riverwalk Amphitheater, all portions of that. And then the lights at the ball field.
Okay.
At Fairytale Park for all four fields.
All four of them?
All four of them, yep. That's roughly 2.7 million. Mark portion of that, 2.7 million would be about 683,000.
Is that replaced, like, galvanized poles?
It's galvanized concrete, galvanized poles with LED lighting.
So that's a, yeah, that's all of our lifetimes that'll be there, so that's a good thing.
Well, I found out, so I had to do some research and get some information on how long those poles and those lots and those lights have been down there. 1975 was the one person alive that I could find that remembered those poles being that long. And I had Justin tell me, I go, that's, you know, I could find one person that could tell me 1975, because they were there before that.
Yeah.
So, they've, I think we've gotten our good out of them, let's put that, put it that way. So, and this will actually reduce the number of poles, because you can use poles to light up other fields, because you can put lights on the backside of them where this, you can't really do that. So actually, we'll reduce the number of poles that are actually out there, because the lights are so much more efficient, so. Be a good thing to get done.
That's awesome.
Great opportunity, I think. Next is an update on the C clip, Highway 56 resurfacing.
That, so Brady originally thought that that was gonna be done this year, and I said, no, it's a '23, 2023 deal. So the plan is to let that early fall, September, October, and with the scheduling being planned early summer, late summer to get that done, I told him I don't want another fall of chip and seal, or fall of asphalt, or anything like that, that's why I said, so it'll be a summertime, when it's warmer out type deal, which will be a lot better, so.
We still have, still have the brick streets under that, correct? Underneath our downtown Main Street, is that where we're talking?
Um, we actually dug that up, right there at Wood Street?
Yeah.
And we didn't hit any brick. We actually dug down four or five foot and hit concrete.
Okay.
So, I think the side streets that are paved have brick underneath. I don't know if Main Street does anything.
I was just curious, because I know that there's been some discussion in the past with that causing some issues with the, well, some of the issues we had last year with that and the heat with that.
Well, the brick didn't have anything to do with that, it was, so, the APAC thing's still an ongoing thing. Bill and I have been working on that. Bill actually got a response from APAC, which blamed BG Consultants for engineering their own and designing their own. So I passed a letter on to them, their attorneys are now writing a rebuttal to what APAC sent. So we're kind of caught in the middle of it, and eventually, one of them's gonna have to decide to pay for it, because Bill still has the opportunity to go to the bonding company and get the money back. And we're not talking about, well, I guess it is, we're talking about $15,000 or $16,000 for the mess they have downtown. That's all it would cost them to do versus.
Sure, yeah.
And that's what, that's what they're fighting about, who's gonna pay that.
Yeah.
Spend that much money on lawyers.
Well, that's kind of what I thought, you know, and it's just a, he said, it's their fault, ours, the engineer, we just did what they designed, and they kind of tried to say that Joe Palick would back them, APAC did, but I talked to Joe Palick, and Joe Palick said, I don't agree with them. It's expected what they do on every state highway in the state of Kansas. So, he goes, I know, I would not back them up on that portion of it that we use. They're saying that that wrong hierarchy was used, and the quantities, and so on and so forth, that it was engineered wrong, and, which is not the case, from what I'm being told. So that's an ongoing thing.
So what caused the problem, then? Does anybody really know?
Well, there's all kinds of theories, but nobody wants to figure out the root cause of it. And I'm not an engineer, and I don't do testing on oils and all that, but the problem is, that stuff's down there, it's supposed to cure. So that oil's supposed to cure in place and not liquefy again. Well, it liquefied. And originally, what they said to me was, is we had groundwater on Main Street, well, I can tell you that's impossible. Because I dug, we dug down five foot into the ground, and we did that patch and overlay there at Wood Street, and we didn't hit any moisture at all, we actually hit concrete about four and a half foot down. So that was the original, and then we went back and went at some pictures, Brady and I did, and when they crack sealed, usually crack seal is only supposed to go in the crack. Well, what they did, there was, on each side of the crack, when they did it, there was three, two, three inches outside the crack on either side.
Really bad.
Well, that oil will not bind to rubber, so when it got hot, it liquefied and it pulled up, and that's the reason you seen the rubber getting ripped out of the ground and everything else, so. And then now, they're blaming the engineering that Brady did, maybe not enough oil, not enough chips, wrong kind of chips, you know, so just kind of, it's kind of, it's a circle right now, we're going in circles, we're kind of caught in the middle of it, but one way or another is gonna come to an end, because we'll just go to the bonding company, and the bonding companies aren't real, they really don't care, they just want it to be solved. So, if they can't come to some consensus on who's responsible.
Okay.
Anyways, that's where that's at.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, next item is executive session on the city leg. How much time?
This is 15 minutes.
Do we have to talk about this before we do that, or?
Well, we can do that government, we can do it now or we can do it after, it's up to you guys.
You want to take care of it now?
I need to find my paperwork on that for one second. Stack of stuff, my stuff and stuff.
We'll get back to that.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do that now if you want to. Stuff on mower, yeah.
Okay.
So anyways, the reason this wasn't on the agenda is, I just got the quote back today at 3:30. So Justin's mower and Jason and Keith are both aware that we've kind of limped that thing along the last couple of years. The motor, it's the second motor in that mower, and that mower's pretty much where I would put a head on it, we put a new radiator in it, it overheats and it uses oil, it's wore out. So, we estimate that that mower probably has close to 5,000 hours on it, which those mowers, you get 3,000, 3,500 hours on a mower and a deck, you're doing pretty good. So Justin needs a mower, because what we had the last couple of years is, the mower would break down, they'd have to borrow more from the street department, which put the street department behind, and Justin's behind. So I asked Matt at Napa to give me a quote on three different mowers. This is the one that closely resembled what we have now, and we had good luck with it. The other ones, the diesel, they said stay away from, and then the hydro one, he said that it's probably unnecessary for what we're using it for. It was just a better commercial transmission, but he said, for what we do, it won't be an issue when one flat surfaces. So that's where we're at with that. Another reason I also put it on the agenda tonight is, as you can imagine, mowers are hard to find. Matt has a line on that exact mower, and he knows where he can get one, he's talked to the guy about it. And I asked Matt to go ahead and just tell him to hold it, and hopefully we'll get it approved nicely, so he's done that. But Matt says he's having a hard time getting a mower, so if we wait, there's a pretty good shot we won't get it. Or it won't be there, we'll have to wait a month or two to get one, so.
Where does this one usually use?
It's at the ball fields.
Oh.
It's a replacement one Justin has over there. So he's had that one, goodness, several years, Larry, I mean, I mean.
Yep.
It's, it's had two mowers in it.
Yeah, it's surgery, just.
We've gotten our good out of it.
Uncomplete on it since we've been here, I think.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they've been having problems with it for the last four years. We put, like I said, we put heads on it, we put, oh, wheel cylinders in it, I mean, and parts are hard to find for, because they don't make that model anymore. So you have to go on eBay or someplace to buy it, and the parts are five times the cost of what they probably should be, so.
And what I can tell you, that Hustler's having supply chain issues, because I've inquired about one of them, they've got a new electric mower coming out for residential. And they're like, eh, maybe next summer, maybe, next summer, so.
So that's that, that, those funds will be paid out to Equipment Reserve, which has plenty of funds, and it has a worth of $1,000 in it right now, because we have a bonding thing on Equipment Reserve, so. But I think for the sake of not having the headache of limping a mower, mower along and mowing slow because it overheats, and you know, at too fast a pace with it, and having high school kids mowing, I think you're gonna have some issues with their mower like that, so.
Good. Any questions?
Straight down to the kids.
Yeah, the cost of it, you gotta see the cost of it. So with our government discounts, actually, probably a pretty good deal for a commercial, it's a really good deal for a commercial mower. The striping kit, Matt included that, and then the flex forks on the front, so it's this hot smooth rider included for free, so. And it comes with a three-year warranty.
You ready to motion?
Yes.
I'm gonna purchase the Hustler Turf Equipment mower for $12,532.57.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve a purchase of the Hustler Turf Equipment 72-inch mower for $12,532.57, coming out of Equipment Reserve. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries four zero. Thanks for looking ahead, Nick, because probably in a month from now, you wouldn't be able to get a mower.
Well, Justin talked to me about, we talked about Monday at our department head meeting, and I was like, crap, we need to do that, and I, I didn't think anything about mowers and supply issues, and then Matt came in this afternoon, he's like, yeah, I know where one's at, it's in Salina. I know where one is, he was like, all around, I can find one. He goes, I can't, I don't have one, and he goes, but there's one in Salina I can get. And I said, well, what's the chances of it being there in two weeks? He said, probably zero. So, I'll bring it tonight and see what we can do, so.
Okay, well, we'll try that executive session again for 15 minutes?
Yeah, that's plenty of time.
Make a motion that we adjourn to executive session with counsel, Representative Leo and Nick.
I'll second.
That was kind of, not very good.
Yeah, sure.
Just gonna have to work on that.
Sean, Sean.
I think it was the time. All right, we'll get Sean. A motion and a second to go into executive session, Attorney-client Privilege for 15 minutes on city leg matters to include entire council, city administrator, and city attorney. All those in favor? Motion carries four zero. All right, we are back in session. Let's look at, whoever you body comment. Nick, you wanna start, or do you wanna finish?
I'll start, I got a couple of things. Uh, the tree program, so Chris Gant contacted me, you remember when Mark was on council, the cost went up $20 because the trees were more, well, with everything going on right now, that trees are more expensive, they've actually went up another $45. So we're at 320, now we're up to 365.
Are they hard time importing trees from China?
I, I don't know what the deal is. Chris said that they just went up, the shipping costs have went up, everything's went up, and, you know, in order to cover her costs, she's not wanting to make any money off the city on it, and then, so you're talking 365, which I guess in the grand scheme of things isn't horrible. Maybe Ryan DeHaileman was in town, stopped by, he's gonna buy four trees for the North River Walk extension, and he wants to put them where we're gonna place benches on either side of where we're gonna place benches, so.
So, so what, what does that need to bump our cost?
365.
Oh, oh, that's the?
Yeah.
Okay.
What size streets are those? I'm sorry, I don't, I'm not familiar with it.
Well, they're all oak, some variation of an oak tree, and they're all, if you look, you've seen the ones down on the Riverwalk.
Sure, are they like 10 footers, or?
Eight to 10 usually, yep.
Okay.
Yep. So, and the city waters them for a year, we guarantee them for a year, she guarantees them for years, only, and we water them for a year, and then after that year, they're on their own, and.
She doesn't have a problem, though, continuing to supply?
Nope, as long as we cover the cost.
Okay.
So, so you guys are aware of that, because I'll have to change the information on the sheets and stuff. The other thing is, Sharon, you're on that tree committee, I need to get mapping on the North River Walk extension, on where you guys want trees.
Okay, Mark had that.
Yeah, Randy was requesting the two areas where the benches are gonna go, that they put a tree on each side of that bench, and they won't put four trees out there on each side of the bench, four trees on the benches.
Okay.
So, I told him I don't think that would be an issue, it makes sense to put trees by.
How close would you have those? Because I think, and I'm not a horticulturist or anything like that, but how close do you plant oaks with, for water and everything like that?
Chris will test all that, yeah, we'll talk to Chris.
She's really good about that.
Yeah, so she, so like, once we planted down there, she told us how many feet they needed to be spread apart, and how deep to bury them, and how often you should water them, and, you know. She just came and looked at some trees, because we had some that didn't look so well, and she said, oh, no, you're over watering, stop watering.
Sure.
The trees, the trees need to be able to root out and look for their own water, instead of relying on you watering it all the time, so, yeah. So she's really good about it, she knows what she's doing.
Did, did Mark say he'd stay on the committee?
Yes, he did.
Okay, I thought so, so, okay.
Yep. And then, we have all that old guard rail that came off of the reservoir dam. The city has had it, been down there by the sewer lagoons for all, probably 18 years, when we have no use for it. We've had people approach us wanting to buy bits and pieces of it, a piece or two of it for a project or something like that, and we've never sold it. Sean Tiffany, because we were talking, scrap prices are really high right now, I think the national average is like 245 a ton or something like that, which is quite a bit of money for a scrap metal. Sean Tiffany has offered to come load it, weigh it, and pay a scrap price for it. That's been down there almost 20 years, and we have no use for it. As you could imagine, something that's sat for 20 years is rusted and so on and so forth, so I don't know what you guys think about that. Because we were talking about holding it off the city, but I thought, I was like, well, I don't really, somebody can use it for something. And then we don't have to haul it off and have that cost involved with it and stuff, so, but he's interested in it, he, obviously, you guys know he has three feet yards, and He, obviously, you guys know he has three feed yards, and they use those for-
Pins.
Pins and crown cattle and making shoots and stuff like that for him. But he has offered a scrap price that averaged, like I said, is two-forty, I think, right now we looked it up today. And he will go down there and load it himself, weigh it, and then write us a check. So it's up to you guys what you wanna do. Like I said, I've only had-
Make a motion, we sell the old pin.
All right, and a motion to sell the guard rail to Sean Tiffany at-
The scrap rate.
I'll second that.
Sean, second. And motion and a second to sell the guard rail down at, that's stored down at the sewer ponds for, to Sean Tiffany for scrap price. Uh, those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries four zero.
And, uh, I should say this before we make the motion, in front of the change it. So I wanna sell it at the national average, because the average locally is different. Does that make sense? I think it's fair to sell it at the national average and then a local average.
What's the difference?
Uh, depends on where you look. So the two places in Emporia, one's at two-oh-five, the other one's at one-sixty. The national average in the United States is two-forty.
Did you, my only question would be with the galvanized on that, um, does that affect the scrap value of it? You sure?
Yeah, Jeff looked it up, Jeff and them deal with that stuff all the time, barbell, so. So, I don't know, I can talk to Sean, see what he's comfortable with, I guess, too. And if we do local, we'll do the higher number, obviously, the two-oh-five. Either way, we just need to get rid of it.
Yeah, okay.
So I'll work on that, I'll work with Sean on that. I think Sean would be fair, he's been fairly good, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Nick?
You guys have voted.
Oh, you wanna modify the motion?
Nope, you guys didn't vote yet, though.
Yeah, we did.
Did you? Yeah.
Motion carries four zero.
Yeah, you did, okay. All right, that's all I got.
Bill?
No, sir, thank you, Tom.
Sharon?
No. Thank you.
Larry?
No, sir.
Nothing nice, thank you.
And Joseph?
When, you know, we've done these water repairs across the streets and intersections, what is-
Come along the street, well, soon as-
That's the one I drive over every day, yeah.
Well, but, um, soon as APAC starts making hot patch again, and it has to be a certain texture for a certain period of time before they'll make it. So as soon as that happens, we can get that prepped and ready, um, and then we'll get hot patch and take leaping, lean out, that's what they call the roller, because you bounce around on it, come down there and roll it and get it put back in place.
That's it, that's all I got?
Looks like that's made to run, then.
How about you?
Don't have anything to add. I'm joining the majority. With that, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So.
Sharon? All those in favor? Raise your right hand, motion carries. Leave it at that. Thank you, everybody.